Good evening. I'm Scott Lambert, and chairman and board, and I would like to call to order our June 12, 2024 supervisor meeting. If we can stand and recite the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to introduce everyone here at the table. To my far right is Supervisor Peter Fixler. Vice Chair Rich Orla on my right. On my immediate left is Bernadette Kearney, our solicitor. And on my far left is Steve Brown, our manager. Executive sessions were held on May 10 at 10:00 a.m. and on June 12 today at 4:30 to discuss legal personnel and various real estate issues. Moving on to 2B, I'll turn it over to Catherine regarding the updates on our grant application updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's several updates for tonight, pleased to announce. So the first is that the township was successful in submitting a $3.5 million roughly request. It's a federal earmark request. This is an earmark that's required to be submitted through our representative, who's Representative Houlihan. I'm pleased to announce that we did make the shortlist of those applications that are now being recommended to Congress for funding. So now we'll wait and see if we're successful in that effort. This brings the total project cost to roughly 8.6 million. So this would close that funding gap that we have. Right now, we have roughly $4.5 million in hand. And this is related to the Route 30 improvements. We were just awarded a Chester County preservation grant. This is related to the potential acquisition of what's referred to as the WCU Foundation or Schiffer property. The award is for $870,000. There is a partner grant application that's still outstanding with DCNR for a request of 1.825 million. And we'll find out about that one a little later this year. The township also submitted a CFA Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant for a, and this is going to come up on your agenda this evening, but I'll just give you a precursor to it now. This is for a trail connection study between GVCO and Bacton Hill Park. This is a design grant for $233,000. And finally, the fire department submitted a grant to DCD for turnout gear. This is a no-match-required grant, which is great. So we'll find out about that one a little later this year, too. So lots going on as far as grants.
Great. Thank you, Catherine. I guess Larry is on Zoom, so if we can have a park and rec update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So quick updates for some of our programming for the summer. We have our summer camp coming up starting on June 24. We are full. It's one of our biggest camps yet with 140 kids. This year saw the implementation of a scholarship program for the first time for our camp. We allotted for five scholarships, and all five scholarships were accounted for giving opportunities to people within the township for camp that might have otherwise not been able to attend the camp. We have our Storytime in the Park, which is our first partnership with the Melbourne Library. We have the final event for that is at Bacton Hill Park next Friday, June 21, a kind of ushering in the summer with some games and activities and summer storytime. As always, we have our traditional summer comp series. Next Wednesday, we have June 19 with Nidichu and Ron and the Hip Tones. In July, we have Crosstown Traffic. And finally, in August, we have My Best Friend's Girl, which is a car tribute band. We have our summer movie night on Friday, August 30, featuring Kung Fu Panda IV. And we also just recently finished installation for three new place structures at Bryn Erin, Birch Road, and Mountain of the Clouds, working with Public Works. Finally, having these structures installed, they look fantastic. And nothing has been confirmed yet, but we are in the works with partnerships to bring some senior programming and youth programming to the township hopefully by the fall time. And those are the big updates for parks and recreation.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Next, we will be bringing in our first presenters from, John Neill, if you'd like to lead us through that.
Good evening. We have some representatives from PennDOT here tonight. Kurt Vendetti is the project manager to discuss the Route 29 sinkhole remediation project that's going to be coming up late summer, early fall. So we have a short PowerPoint trying to explain what's going on.
You're telling me we have a sinkhole problem in this township?
Yes, sir, unfortunately.
Really? When did that happen?
Evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. Again, my name is Kurt Vendetti. I'm PennDOT's consultant project manager for the sinkhole remediation project. We have a briefing tonight on the project and, for things. For tonight's discussion, we'll go through an overview of the project, proposed improvements, about what to, oop. Sorry, can you hear me okay? Sure, speaking to the mic here. John, thank everyone definitely for everything. Thank you. So for tonight's presentation, we'll go through an overview of the project. We'll talk about the proposed improvements. We'll talk about what to expect during construction. And we'll review the project schedule and also, of course, discuss any questions that may come up from the board. So the project is located along SR 29 More Hall Road, just north of Atwater Drive. You can see in red here, there's the approximate sinkhole treatment area that we'll be focusing on for this project. The limits do stop just south of the on-ramp to the PA Turnpike. So as you alluded to, we're all very familiar with the sinkhole issues in this township. Picture on the left is from the winter of 2023. And off to the right is from this past spring where we've had sinkholes within the actual travelway, causing a disruption to the public. So PennDOT has completed repairs on both occasions. And at this point, we do recognize that there's a need for a long-term solution for these problems. So we didn't initiate a project. We do have state funding for design. We have federal funds for construction. At this point, I'll turn things over to Bruce, who will talk about some of the design that we've completed for the project and talk about some of the geotech considerations that we've looked into. So Bruce.
Thanks, Kurt. I'm Bruce Shelley. I'm working for AECom, which is a consultant engineering firm. And we've been tasked to try to come up with a more permanent fix on the sinkholes that have been happening out in this area, mainly between Atwater and Route 29. So the first thing we were working on is we needed to get more data or more information. So we went into doing some geophysical work first, which was, if you can see in the picture on the left, is a seismic analysis. There is a really heavy weight that is hit in the ground right where the back of the truck is. And then there's a line of geophones behind it to sort of measure the reflections off the different density materials. So we basically are getting an idea where the top rock is with this and also some variations with the rock as it goes along. We did that first, and then we did the ground penetrating radar. That is more for a surface review of, again, these are non-intrusive activities. So we can take all of this all along, the whole area, very quickly. And then, so we use that data to sort of narrow down like some areas of concern. And then we come back with some test borings to verify them. We did that for data. And then finally, we did checking all the sewer storm systems that run along the road here. This is about 1,700-foot stretch of roadway that's of concern. And all of the drainage from the local developments in this area go into the basins that are right next to this road. And then all of that goes right into our drainage system. So we have to make sure that those pipes are working to keep the water moving along.
Bruce, can you clarify what development drainage is going into this area that's causing, potentially causing the problem?
Well, you can see in this picture, right before Atwater, going south is that large basin that, yeah, right there. So that, all the drainage from the developments and the businesses areas drain into that basin. And then that basin, once that gets, hits the overflow, it'll go in a pipe that goes right to our drainage system through the roadway and goes down, down the hill. And then finally, you can get it out where the big lake is to the north of this. And there is actually another basin on the other side of the road that's not in the picture there. So it's a tremendous amount of water that gets stored with heavy rainfall in that area. And it's just based on the development around it. But it's all moving, for some reason, putting into our roadway and then getting past that area. And then, once you get past that area and start going down the hill, you have outlets away from the road.
Is there anything that you folks recommend to us in terms of another basin to spread the water out, move it in different directions?
I think the good news is for you, all these basins are lined. So they're not leaking out into the ground and causing sinkholes in that area. It's actually, you know, it's a pretty good system as long as the system can handle it.
So would you say that our capacity is okay? It's just that there's leakage through the pipe system?
We believe the capacity is okay.
The capacity is okay. All right. Thank you.
The next, oh, so this is just a picture of the geophysical approximation of the top of rock. All the blue lines along the roadway were where the geophones were traversed. And this is just one line all along the roadway. And we look at that and we get the top of rock approximately. And then we look for like depressions in the rock or whether the rock is fairly flat or variable like it normally is in sinkhole-prone areas. And then we use that data to look up like areas of concern. And once we truth that with the test borings, we were able to limit the area that we need to fix or do a more permanent fix to pretty much the area that, starting from the south in the area of the Atwater Drive up to where Quarry Hill Road comes in around Station, from Station 314 to 320. So in those areas where our proposed recommended fix is limited mobility grouting, which basically is a pattern of grout holes into the ground where they'll drill down to the top of rock or into rock and then take the grouting depth down to there and grout into rock until we get some resistance and the pressure. And then we move up stage by stage until we get to basically about 10 feet below the ground. So we're sealing off, we're starting at the bottom, sealing off the rock where the problems originate from. And then continue up through the soil just to compact the soil above that. So that will be done in any area we have a concern. It'll be a pattern of holes. We also have, if we do have shallow sinkholes or shallow rock, which we do have some areas, we can get that from the surface and do a permanent fix from the surface. Because once we're in the rock, we can bond to the rock. And then finally, the drainage improvements. We looked at all the drainage existing. There were some areas that we might have to replace some pipes. But other than that, we're going to be lining the pipes with coating the pipes to keep the tightness of, keep the water tight and keep going the way it's been. One problem before was when the sinkholes did open up, they found a pipe that was totally rusted out and the water was just exiting right in the, basically the center of the intersection. They were in the process of replacing a lot of that pipe, but they had to stop. And also, in that area, once we're done, we're going to reconstruct the roadway. This is just a typical operation for the grouting. There's multiple drill rigs here. And, you know, to keep this going, moving as fast as possible, we're going to have, you know, three or four rigs in the stages where we can fit them, get this done as quick as possible. We have the rigs with the mass. One might be a drilling rig, and the other might be the grouting rig, where the hook up, the concrete will come in and they'll deliver that to a hopper and a compressor. And then it gets air pressured down into the ground. So that's your typical situation you see on 29. This is just the idea of our grout pattern. The black holes are every 12 feet center, center. And then if we find, and we'll keep track of the amount of grout that each hole takes. And at the end, if there's ones that's taking more excessively, we'll use split spacing and add more boring, more holes in between. That brings us to traffic control and back to Kurt.
Thank you. I'll do my best here, Bruce. So for traffic control, we have four main stages, as you can see here. I know there's a lot of text on the slide, so bear with me. We do have some graphics to follow this. But stage one is short-term off-peak closures. And it's really just for the median removal and for temporary pavement, which will lead into stage two. Now, stage two is northbound construction. So that will shift all traffic to the southbound lanes. It will also maintain one lane in each direction during construction. There will be a short detour for Atwater Drive, which will have traffic turning right as they approach the intersection and going along Quarry Hill Road around the Wawa and then intersecting along with 29 as well. And there is going to be also a detour for Flat Road as well that will utilize Phoenixville Pike as well. For stage three, we essentially flip to the other side. Now we're doing southbound construction. All traffic will then shift to the northbound lanes. We'll have one lane in each direction of traffic. And we'll also have turning lanes for Atwater Drive and for Wawa, maintaining access to the shopping center and businesses throughout construction for the entire time. And stage four is really just some cleanup work, reconstructing the median curb and reestablishing the original roadway cross-section. So here's a graphic of the stage-two detour. You can see the work zone has the hatching or cross-hatching pattern on the, I guess, eastern side here on the south. In yellow, you can see the active traffic lanes, which are highlighted. So again, one lane in each direction along the southbound lanes. And then you can see the road closed sign to the bottom of the screen. Traffic coming from the development will have to make a right onto Quarry Hill Road. We'll loop around the Wawa. And then we'll basically have access to 29 at the intersection of Quarry Hill Road as well.
Can I ask you, at what point will you like notify either local businesses or school districts so they can set up their bus routes?
Certainly. I believe it's at least a two-week notification for the contractors. We can certainly do additional advanced notifications as well. We can work with the township and, you know, have meetings as needed to notify the public if there's any other outreach we can do. Happy to do that.
Yeah, I would think if we could maybe get advanced notice to the school district, it might be good because they're probably setting up their schedule for bus routes going forward at this point in time. So that might be a real help for them.
Certainly.
Okay.
And as far as the construction work during the stage-two detour, you can see this is just kind of a cross-section view. So there are southbound and northbound lanes off to the left. There will be concrete barrier separating the work zone, which is to the right in this graphic. So that will provide safety through the use of temporary concrete barrier. As I mentioned, for stage three, it's essentially flipped. So now the work zone is on the northern side or eastern side of the sheet here. And again, the yellow highlights are the active traffic patterns. So you can see there's one lane in each direction. There also is a dedicated right-turn lane coming northbound onto Atwater Drive. As you exit Atwater, if you're going north towards the Turnpike, you also have kind of a dedicated right-turn lane. There is a bit of a merge there, but then there's also a right-turn lane that opens up to Quarry Hill Road. So we tried to provide as much width as possible to main access to that shopping center and that development there. But again, this is maintaining traffic in each direction during stage three.
Can I ask a quick question while we're on this? So just so I can get it right. So everybody who's coming out of Atwater, Wawa, and the rest of the stores and the apartments there, when they do hit that workaround to get to Quarry Hill Road and they get onto 29, when they reach 29, are they going to be able to make a left and a right? Or is it going to be all northbound only traffic?
That's correct, left and right. And there will be a temporary signal there as well to help regulate that. And we are doing temp signals throughout. We're also coordinating with the Turnpike for the traffic control to the north as well. So we'll have temporary signals and timing adjustments throughout the project to help traffic flow.
But when it switches over to the other lane, when it switches over to the other lane as well, those signals will still be in time?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
There would be barrier across now. If that's a concern, we can look at doing maybe temporary barrier just so that can be removed and having some provisions for temporary paving, just to, if there is an emergency, just so we can work with you on access there. Sure.
Greg, I would assume that kind of in the same boat as the school as far as notifying local EMTs that might be traveling into the township to give them advanced notice as well as far as that this is happening in case they have to come in a different way?
I believe our contract already has provisions for that, but we'll double check. And if not, we'll include that to ensure that there's access maintained temporarily. Sure. Slide please.
I was just going to say, normally through the Chester County Police Radio, they have all of that information. So any road closures and things of that nature would go out with an emergency dispatch. Am I correct there?
Yeah. And this is a similar graphic showing the traffic along the northbound side of 29 and work on the southbound side, again, separated by the temporary concrete barrier. So here's a little bit of information about the schedule and what we're expecting. We're wrapping up design now. We hope to anticipate, or we hope to advertise the project in the next couple of weeks. With that, we anticipate notice to proceed for the contractor in September 2024. Stage one and two, we think will take, you know, approximately up until January of next year. From there, they'll jump into stage three, which we anticipate lasting up to June. And then about one more month for final paving, striping, and cleanup work finishing in July of 2025. So it's close to a year of construction total. The grouting and the drilling takes time. If you think of the depth that you have to drill, it's, you're going down 30, 40 feet plus sometimes in some instances. And the grouting operation does require an inspector on site full-time to watch and monitor just to make sure it's being done properly. So it's really something that you can't rush. So for that reason, it does take some time to work through construction. So we realize this may be an inconvenience, but the goal is that when we walk away from here, there's no further sinkholes, no disruptions to the public with having these emergency-type repairs having to occur.
This portion of 29 is the worst of the sinkholes along 29? I don't remember there being others towards Route 30.
Sure. This is where we've observed the repeat sinkholes, you know, at almost a regular frequency. So we did feel that this section deserved immediate attention just to prevent this from happening again. And I will say, too, I forgot to mention, we are including this contract with a 202 project. There's a very similar situation along 202 in King of Prussia between South Henderson Road and Solon Boulevard. So they will be let as the same contract. Initially, we were staggering the projects, but given the recurrence at this location, we decided to put them both pretty much at the same time, both starting in September this year. So that's pretty much all we have for tonight. There is a project website. This presentation will be posted to the website and available to the public. Again, my name's Kurt Vendetti. I'm happy to answer any questions that the group has.
Kurt, I've had a number of people ask me about being able to notify the businesses that are in that immediate area so they can plan for this. Is there anything specific that you folks are doing or are doing in conjunction with our folks to get the word out to them in advance?
Sure. I believe PennDOT's press office will put out another release as we get closer to construction. But aside from that, we're happy to work with the township. If there's additional briefings you'd like us to provide or meetings with the owners, we're happy to meet with them as well to help communicate the project. Well, thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. Moving on, I don't know if Larry or Steve will talk about the recognition for Anish Nar?
I'll handle that, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so the township would like to recognize Anish Nar of Scout Troop 78 for the completion of this Eagle Scout project of the hiking trail restoration at Valley Creek Park, which was completed a couple of months ago. Anish and his troop worked clear out invasive species, overgrown plants, fallen branches, protecting roots from the hiking trail in the park. They immensely improved trail safety with the installation of new blaze markers, outlining clear trail guidance, as well as made and installed a new sign outlining the hiking trail route. The trail feels and looks safer, it's more inviting, and it's infinitely more accessible thanks to Anish and his troop. The installation of the sign kind of really draws people in and lets them know that not only the trail exists there, but exactly how long it is to really gauge what kind of walk they're getting themselves into. The few times that I've been there in the past few weeks, I've seen more and more people utilizing the trail, really just attesting into the work that Anish has done for this. So he's done an incredible job. And I would like to thank him and the rest of Troop 78 for all of their work.
Absolutely. I'll give a shout-out. Good job, guys. And I will also add that throughout the year, we've had, was this our third, Steve? Is this our third project from the scouts that have worked on projects that have done a great job and a great service to the community? So shout-out to all of the scouts.
Yeah, I believe we have had three projects done for the township from this troop, excuse me, which is a local troop. And the fire department has had two. One is still underway, which is the restoration of the, excuse me, the siren. So there have been five recent projects. And I was just contacted by two twin brothers, again, from Troop 78, who are looking for projects.
Okay. Thank you. Don, any questions out there? No? All right, moving on to section three with the board motions and resolutions. We'll start off with Mr. We'll start off with Mr. Mr. Whoa, we got something?
Yeah, one thing that I want to do, well, there's two things. One, we wanted to talk about a road closure on Plainbrook. And I'm going to skip that one if you don't mind. I want to introduce the Arrow team. Arrow serves as our civil engineers. You have Mark Harmon, who's Chief Operating Officer now. Mark has risen in the ranks. You may recognize Mark from doing engineering and geotech work, I guess, for lack of a better way to describe it. And you have, to Mark's immediate right is Gavin Freeman. And to Gavin's right is Ed Van Arsdale. Ed is serving as our new project manager, client manager, and Gavin will be assisting him. So Mark and team, I don't know if you wanted to say anything else?
Yeah, just mainly wanted to come and just introduce Gavin and Ed. As Steve said, I had the pleasure for working when I was in a technical role for the township, probably for about 10 years, John and I fixed many sinkholes over the years. So do know the township very well, worked with Steve for a long time in the code area. Al Vitatelli, the previous engineer that was here, he decided to pursue another opportunity. So we wish Al well, but we were able to bring Ed in. Ed's got more than 20 years of experience, very similar role. Ed has also done a lot of private land development, so he's been on both sides of the table. He's asked the questions and he's answered the questions. Gavin, in his role, was supporting Al Vitatelli before. So a lot of the, there's, there's really no overlap. The developers, all the ongoing projects, we've been able just to continuously move forward. We've met with staff a couple of different times. We continue to have ongoing meetings with staff. I've been checking in with Catherine to make sure everything's going along smooth. We've had no bumps in the road at all, but thought it was important to come here tonight just to be able to introduce them and answer any questions the board may have. Unless there's questions for me, that's all I have.
The only thing I'd ask is that somewhere along the line, there's always events that occur on the weekend. And in terms of maybe trying to reach one of you gentlemen, it kind of filters to me, and if I can't get all of it, John or somebody else, do you mind if I end up having your cell phones? And we can share, share numbers, just in the event that something happens? I'd appreciate that.
We can get those to Steve and have those to Sherwood.
Very good, I appreciate that.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks for the opportunity, everybody.
Let's see, John, you were, you were going to give us another road update on Plainbrook.
Right, Aqua Project on Plainbrook Road. They're going to be back with a road closure starting on Monday now that school's over. 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM each day until they get their pipe done, which they're expecting that around the first week of August. Signs have been posted for a while. We just want to let everybody know it's a little bit longer road closure. Try and help them get done faster. And they've done most of the side streets in that neighborhood already. So they get Plainbrook done, they'll be very much complete that job, so.
Who's doing the project again?
Aqua. It's not us. We get the complaints, it's Aqua and their contractor.
Weekdays, right?
Weekdays. No weekends, right? All right. And a little update, the road repairs on Bacton Hill, South Bacton, that neighborhood start the end of next week. So we'll be getting permanent base repair and final top on those roads. Everywhere they dug up and a little bit later, we have a contract that's going to pick up the sections that aren't included. So all of Bacton, Spring Valley will be paved. Yes, it is.
Excuse me, John, the, is the work sewer work or Aqua?
This is sewer work.
Sewer, okay. Thank you.
Tom, what is the detour exactly?
It's the same detour they had before. It's going to be Sweetsford to Church to Route 30.
Okay.
Sure, Catherine.
Someone once said there was no bad questions. And I'm just sitting here because I do not necessarily understand the relationship. And you use, you use initials sometimes, and I just clarification for who you are in our township. That's all. Sure.
Arrow serves as our civil engineer. I don't even know how many years. I think it's, it's been a long time.
I've been with your company 22 and I've been here all the time, so it's been a couple of decades.
Okay, and as civil engineer, they provide a variety of services. They review all the subdivision and land development plans. They make inspections when the development is being put in. They've helped to design parks, stormwater improvements, really kind of a general purpose engineering. Oh, yeah, roads. They help very much with the road paving program that John and his department manage. Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Again, moving on to section three under board motions and resolutions. Chief, you want to talk about the new Dodge Durango?
There's not much to say to the new Dodge Durango that we're asking for.
What color is it?
It's black.
It's not going to be pink?
Not going to make pink.
Why not?
We have, we want to keep the pink car special. And it is. Too much of a good thing is.
Okay.
So we'll be trading a, oh, we'll be selling a 2018 Dodge Charger with just about 100,000 miles now. So we're, we're pretty much just trying to stay in on par. It's going to be an unmarked, just as the Charger we're getting rid of is unmarked. So we're, it'll have some outfit, but not quite as much as a marked, a fully marked unit.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to approve the purchase of the police vehicle. 2024 Dodge Durango, New Holland Auto, $45,915 through the Co-Stars program.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And passes. Steve, you might want to give a little background in terms of the agreement for the open space sale for Spring Ridge and Balderson properties, which is, which is going on for probably over seven?
Oh, at least, yeah.
Seven years?
Yeah, the Spring Ridge and Balderson properties are two properties, two large properties on Phoenixville Pike across from the Great Valley High School and Middle School. Most of the land is in East Whiteland Township. Some of the land is in Charlestown Township. The properties really are by and large undeveloped. They're a wooded hillside with actually a nice stand of woods and there are springs and headwaters up in that area. And we've been working to acquire the properties for many, many years, at least seven, if not longer. The but is they're associated with the Malvern TCE Superfund Site. We are not purchasing or we do not intend to purchase the Superfund Site. That's not subject to any of our discussions. And if we do acquire these two properties, again, neither one is the actual Superfund Site that the EPA manages. However, because these properties are next to and associated, used to be all one property, the EPA's involved, the, excuse me, there's a quote, a number of federal agencies and departments that are involved, the property owner, the responsible parties, slew of attorneys, sorry, Bernadette, wherever you want, and Bronn, or any, and Lou, any other attorney in the room. Maya, I think you're an attorney as well. Nothing against attorneys. My dad was an attorney, but anyway, Rich. As I named them all. Yeah, I think, yeah, right. Anyway, I called you all out. Anyway, we need to execute an agreement of sale. The nice thing about this property is the acquisition is largely fully funded by both Chester County and the National Park Service, actually. That's one of the other federal departments involved. National Park Service has told us that we need to have an agreement signed, not settlement. We need to have an agreement of sale signed by the end of this month or they will not be willing to extend our, our grant any further. So we've been working very diligently, and I want to thank Catherine in particular for her efforts and Bernadette for her efforts. Again, there's a number of people and interests that are on these calls and meetings. And we're determined to get this agreement of sale done and in shape for the board to approve. So what we're asking is because it has to happen by the end of this month, which is prior to the next meeting, we're asking for the board's authorization to allow me to execute the agreement of sale when I get the green light from our solicitor's office.
See no, I see no problem with that at all at this point in time. Time is of the essence here. Peter, Rich, do you have any concerns, questions?
None. It's time to move forward. Absolutely.
It is. Any, okay. So Peter, would you like to make a broad motion to give Steve authority to sign this agreement?
If there are no objections in the crowd, I'd like to make a motion to grant our township manager, Steve Brown, the authority to execute the agreement of sale for Spring Ridge and Balderson Properties.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. I mean, this really is an exciting opportunity for the township. It's, it's unique because of its size and its natural features. And it's, hopefully, we can acquire it and it'll be a real asset to the community. It just, we, we just, there aren't any properties like it that are around.
Okay. Thank you. Also, a small shout out to previous supervisor, Sue Drummond, who, who kind of started this project during, I think, her early term. And I actually recruited her to kind of help out Steve at one point in time in the last year or two. So she's put in some more time to try to push it along, and we appreciate all that effort as well. Moving on to 3C regarding grant application. Catherine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution is for the GTRP grant application that was referenced earlier on in the grant summaries. Specifically to give some more information on this, there's no plans this evening to present because this is a study for the preparation of preliminary plans to look at routes to connect the GBCO site to the recently completed Bacton Hill Park. The township has applied for grant funds for this study in the past and unfortunately was denied. But we think that this is a good opportunity to put forward another application with the completion of the park. And GBCO actually is, has a partner grant application to the same great grant program, which will not impact our funding, but actually should help our application because they're planning to move to phase two of their construction. If you're familiar with that land development application that was previously before the board. And so we think this is a great opportunity to move forward with that as our study will segue nicely with their plans to move on to phase two.
Any questions? Concerns? Rich, you want to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to approve resolution 2024-24 under the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program, grant application to the Great Valley Community Organization to connect to Bacton Hill Park Trail.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes.
Next.
Next. Arlie.
All right, Arlie. So this, you may remember this from last month. The township traffic engineer was here to discuss this with you. This is related to the Route 352, excuse me, bridge overhead clearance issue. That's been an ongoing concern. We've actually since had an additional, at least one, bridge hit since that meeting, which underscores the importance of us looking toward a solution for some advance warning. So as directed by the board last month, this is the resolution to authorize the township to apply for the Arlie Grant Program related to the Route 352 Bridge Overhead Clearance.
I'll, I'll add a point. If anyone is going to be renting a U-Haul, realize that their box trucks do not make it through that tunnel. So you need to take a different route.
You're not speaking from personal experience, are you?
Facebook, you know? Total truth. Now, we've, we've, we've heard that, we've seen that. And I know our, our police officers have talked to U-Haul about trying to get that word out, but just passing that along. So Rich, would you like to make another motion?
Sure. Motion to approve resolution 2024-25 for the Arlie, which is Automated Red Light Enforcement, grant application for the Route 352 Bridge Overhead Clearance improvements.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Greg, would you like to come up to Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have several part-time vacancies within our department due to several staff members moving from part-time to full-time over the last several months. So I'm asking for the board to approve the appointment of Michael McGuire to a part-time firefighter.
Okay. Everything looks fine with him?
I think everything looked great.
Okay, Peter, make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michael McGuire to part-time firefighter slash EMT.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And passes. Zach, I guess maybe you can give a little narrative on the cancellation here of this public hearing?
Certainly. So this is a conditional use hearing that we had scheduled for this evening's meeting. This is for the application of Penn Crest. It's for redevelopment of the importer barn as a combination of commercial, sort of restaurant, retail, with some component of multifamily at the rear of the site. They, after visiting the planning commission last month and some interactions with staff, going through the review letters, and particularly with the fire department in the last week or so, trading some review comments, they've decided to postpone the hearing until they're able to further work through some of the concerns that were raised at the meetings and in those letters. We will likely target the July 10th meeting, provided that some of these issues sort of get bared out in the meantime.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to section five, motion to award and motion to advertise. John?
Okay. The first item, A, we are asking for approval to advertise the Route 401 Traffic Signal Project. We've talked about this for quite a while. We have a traffic signal technology grant for this project, and we're finally getting through the Pendot approval process and we're getting ready to go to bid. So probably won't be awarded at the next meeting, but the one right after that.
That sounds great.
How soon do you think they could get working on that?
Well, contracts are normally about a month, and then it's lead time for a Well, contracts are normally about a month, and then it's lead time for equipment. It's going to be a fall project for sure.
Okay.
So fall over the winter and have it done.
All right. And, uh, you want to continue with the paving and we'll?
Yeah, you can do them both at the same time.
We'll combine them.
Okay. The, the second is the award for part two of our 2024 paving. Uh, Highway Materials is low bidder. They were also the low bidder on part one. And this job is specifically Bacton Hill Road that Aqua doesn't do, Spring Valley Road that Aqua doesn't do, those sections they didn't disturb, and Warren Avenue after we finished the Culver project this year. So that'll be the whole thing in the township, Warren, from Borough Line down to the whole Lancaster.
I'm renaming tonight's meeting Roads, Roads, Roads.
They need to work, that's for sure.
Okay. Uh, Rich, would you like to make a double motion?
Sure. Motion to approve the advertising of the Route 401 Traffic Signal Project for a Traffic Signal Technology Grant and Part Two, 2024 Paving to Highway Materials in the amount of $144,253.70.
Peter, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, John.
You ready, Zach? C? Sure. This is a request to authorize advertising for a public hearing, uh, for a text amendment related to the Corporate Gateway Overlay District. That's on, sort of on the south side of Sweetsford Road between Route 29 and the township boundary with two different township. This is an existing ordinance. Um, there are modifications proposed to some of the floor area ratios, mixes of uses, um, some procedural and like sort of, uh, process-related, um, changes to the ordinance, um, architectural standards, things that didn't exist in the, uh, previous ordinance that's on the books. Uh, so we are just recommending those modifications, um, and the hearing would be scheduled for the July 10th Board of Supervisors Meeting. Happy to elaborate in any way.
Any questions for anyone? Peter, Rich?
This is for the 52 East Sweetsford Road.
Yeah, this is to address some of the issues that were raised, um, with that property owner, um, some of the difficulties they've had with the site, um, and I think also some added benefit aside from anything related to that, just improvements to the existing language.
Sounds good. Make a motion?
Yeah, would you please?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertising of public hearing for the following ordinance zoning text amendment related to Corporate Gateway Overlay, CGO, district for a hearing at July 10th, the, at the July 10th, 2024 Board Supervisors Meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, moving on to planning and development, uh, regarding the Sweetsford Road Nvidia Data Center. Um, I'm, to strike, strike the word Nvidia, it's just a private joke, and Zach, do you want to leave this?
Certainly. So this was on the board's agenda last month to consider drafting the, um, resolution, rather. The, um, resolution's been drafted, contains some, the standard boilerplate conditions and some project-specific conditions. Um, specifically, there are some, um, provisions for post-development testing and monitoring to ensure that it's consistent with some of the, uh, studies and models that were, um, provided to ensure that the, there aren't, you know, they're not exceeding, uh, noise levels under our ordinances.
Um, I got one question before Lou. You, you guys may have worked this through, but in our discussion, I, we had this morning, um, I just wanted to talk about some type of condition or understanding of perhaps some of the, um, design work. Um, just to be clear, I know I brought up last week about the issue of the windows and reflections and so forth and so on, and, um, so I don't know how that was resolved and when we'll put that in there, so I just wanted to just clarify that.
Sure. So I, I believe Bernadette and Lily talked earlier, we, uh, added a condition to the draft, uh, resolution to require that the, um, the app can provide architectural renderings, uh, during the final plan review, just so we can understand sort of what that looks like and if there's any issues that may be created potentially with glare or other things like that, that we can just kind of understand what they might be and, and work through those. I wouldn't necessarily envision a lot of that, but I think it's always helpful to see what the building is going to look like.
Yeah, just so there's no confusion on that. We can definitely produce renderings. In fact, we have them, you know, of the exterior of the building, um, whether, whether they're going to be to the, to have an architect's seal on them or not. I sort of doubt that because that won't happen until afterwards, but we do have, I think you want to see what the building's going to look like from the outside. We will definitely produce that. And nothing on the interior that hasn't even been, that hasn't even been designed yet.
Sure.
We, we can bring that.
Yeah. Just along the road, all on the, on the same page.
Yep.
You know, and understanding.
I know what you want.
And visuals sometimes get conveyed differently through narrative stories. So I think that's a good step.
The only thing I'd add that I didn't mention was this, this is for preliminary approval. The applicant has submitted the final plans, um, and those are currently under review as well.
Okay. Any questions out there? Any questions from the public here? Peter, Rich?
What's your timing? The hoped-for timing to begin construction? Hoped-for?
Hoped-for timing to begin construct.
Not promised.
NPDES permit is all that we're waiting for, and that's under review right now.
That's outstanding, okay.
We should have the NPDES permit by September.
Right, okay. All right.
I'm Charles Ladain from Greenfig. My partner's Greg Walters also with us. The, we're in the process of getting an NPDES permit and it's, and finishing up the, the final land development. As soon as you, you give us that, we would be able to move forward, and we would only be held up by the NPDES permit. We hope to be started in the fall. Uh, there are some, we're, we're still working with the contract. The contracts are 1,500 pages long. Keep lots of lawyers working. Anything else? Good.
No, I don't, I don't have any more questions. If you're good, you'll make a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, Rich?
All right, I make a motion to approve preliminary land development plan, LD 142023, for the Sweetsford Road Data Center.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to stay up here for the next one, too. I'm, I'm pinch hitting tonight for my partner.
All right, so like the last, um, application at the last month's meeting, the board authorized...
Excuse me. We're, we're leaving. Thank you all. It's been a pleasure.
Okay, we, we can finish this meeting now.
Good working with you too, Charlie. You want to do this one, Zach? Eat this one up?
Sure. Um, Zach?
We're, we're, we're thinking of leaving, so hurry up.
Okay. Yeah, it is awfully nice out. Um, so last month's meeting, the board authorized, uh, solicitor and staff to draft an approval resolution, this is an amended final plan for the Knickerbocker redevelopment where Anfield at Malvern, as it's known by the, um, the, um, from the marketing side. Um, this resolution honestly wasn't quite as much fun as, to write as some of them. Um, it really just carries forward a lot of the previous conditions of approval. There wasn't a whole lot to add. It's just a modification to the, uh, clubhouse area for the most part. We did carry forward some of the, um, plan notes from the previous application regarding landscaping, which was, um, a big top, topic of discussion, the board recalls. So, uh, in that case, it's a very simple one.
And I understand we got involved with, um, some, some calls and things last weekend regarding some, um, tree issues that I guess we resolved, and so it's all the way, resolved all the way through, correct?
Yeah, I've not heard anything since. Yep.
Okay. And I think we're good to go unless there's any questions out there. I think we have a question. If you can come to the mic, please.
I was just wanting to, I'm Carol Armstrong. I'm Carol, I'm Carol Armstrong, live in Charlestown. I was just curious if East Whiteland has dark sky ordinance that, uh, impacts developments?
I'm, I'm sorry, dark side?
Dark sky ordinances, ordinances to conserve dark skies, control light pollution that affect saldo, saldo.
Yeah, we don't have what most people refer to as dark sky, uh, requirements, but we do have requirements for shielding that contains the site and directs it in a downward, uh, fashion and produces, I'll say, horizontal spillover, uh, from property to property. That's more how our ordinance is set up through zoning.
So it's applied to this development for Knickerbocker?
Yeah, they would have to come, they have, they have demonstrated compliance with our lighting ordinance.
Donna, any other questions out there? Okay, so, Peter?
Sure. Scott, I would like to make a motion, excuse me, um, to approve LD dash 13 dash 2021 for the Anfield at Malvern, the amended final land development for the Knickerbocker redevelopment for the clubhouse.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And passes.
Lou, are you leaving?
Yeah, right.
Can you please just announce your departure?
I was hoping to. Please. Go along with it.
Lou, Lou, you need to sit in the front row and be quiet.
Can I leave?
I don't know. Can you? These next two items are, um, to consider, consider accepting extensions of time in which the board has to render their decision on the following development applications. The first is for the Gray Star Apartments project in Great Valley Corporate Center. Uh, this is a preliminary slash final plan, which is extended through and to the July 10th Board Supervisors Meeting. We're currently reviewing a revised plan set, um, and in discussions regarding some of like the linear park improvements that were discussed at previous meetings.
Nothing substantial there, so, um, any questions? You guys? Nope, straightforward.
None.
All right, Peter, you want to make another motion?
Sure, I make a motion to grant an extension of time to render a decision for the LD dash zero five dash 2023 Gray Star Apartments in the Great Valley Corporate Center, preliminary slash final plan until July 10th, 2024.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And passes. Moving on to Bishop Tube redevelopment.
Yep. So the applicant, um, has transmitted a, an offer of extension that would carry the plan through September 30th, 2024, currently awaiting a resubmission based on the last round of reviews. Um, I don't have any status update in terms of a resubmission, but that's sort of where it stands in the process on the land development side.
Kind of straightforward on that. Any questions? And come on down.
I, I have asked this question before, but there's never been an answer, but I'll ask it again, is why we can't say no to this development after everything? And my other question is why do the developers in this township have so much power and us as residents do not? I think that's bothersome too, Scott, in, in a sense. I know, I, I know you guys are upset by this as well, but I, it is so disheartening that we've since nineteen, since seven, seventeen, 2017, and if Larry didn't see that sign, that zoning sign down there, there'd been townhouses on a toxic site, 13 acres, 300 some odd townhouses. And when I see people walk in this building, yeah, there was a lot, 282 townhouses on 13 acres of toxic land. And it, it's, it's, I know, it's upsetting. It continues to be upsetting, and I do not understand, and because I have not gotten an answer yet, and my community has not gotten, this is not just about me, it's about our community, why with our constitutional right to clean air, a clean environment, why we can't say no to this development? The DEP gave him a covenant not to sue. Someone knew, someone knew that this was bad.
I know this has been going on for a long time, and I, I, I appreciate your concern, but I, I, you know, there's been so many moving parts. There's so much going on, there's so much going on in the background right now that you folks don't even know. We can't discuss. So, um, I guess I would ask Bernadette from a legal standpoint on how to perhaps address your concern to some degree.
Yeah, and one of the issues is, is under the municipality's planning code, it, it's the, they're making the, we're getting something from them. They're giving, offering us, hey, you don't have to make a decision, we'll give you an extension. And then that just, in my view, and this is just my view, that makes it better for us because the longer this goes on, maybe they decide not to build. Do you see what I'm saying? Like if we force the issue...
I, I kind of...
Wait, let me finish.
I know what you're saying.
We force the issue, we go to court, then it gets, it's, then it's done faster. And, but as long as we give them extensions, we don't have to make a decision.
It will not be done until the DEP okays it.
Right, and that was my second part of this. We have to wait till DEP, we thought DEP was going to make a decision faster than they had. So, and I think they're also waiting on DEP to make a decision because that decision has to be reflected in the plan. So, right, we have to wait, so which is why they keep giving us the extension.
Everything we know about the toxicity of that site, it just blows my mind that that's not enough.
Well, that's up to DEP.
And that bothers, you know, yeah, there's, I mean, it just seems like, you know, DEP's over here, East Whiteland's over here, and I, I know it's, it's, it's a system. The system kind of sucks, but it's, it's heart-wrenching, it's disturbing, and there's other questions as far as when, who, how are those machines going to go back there to develop anything? They're going to come through Village Way. They can't get through, you're talking about 352 Road, Melon Road Bridge? So there's so many things, but it just, I, I, I know you know, but I'm not going to stop coming up to the mic to tell you how upsetting this is to us and my community.
So, we have some new information for you. Uh, we being, uh, Delaware Riverkeeper Network, uh, the community Bishop Tube Cleaning Green, the Val, I'm so sorry about that. What happened? Uh, the Valley Forge Channel Limited and Penn State Extension Masterwork. We'll have a report that we're going to be giving you soon, but, um, and there's good news and bad news. The good news is there is a remarkable number of, uh, unique native vegetative species on that property, including three trees of concern, of conservation, that are on conservation concern list, that will be destroyed by the development. Um, the bad news is, I just said it, that they will be destroyed by the development. So, um, these trees and pro, how, information's beginning to emerge that, um, some of these trees are able to actually decom, absorb and decompose TCE, can be used, in other words, in the remediation of TCE, uh, ex, you know, toxification. So, uh, there's a lot of value, uh, in these 62. So we'll, we'll say more about it in the report for you, but I just wanted to, uh, give you that heads up and, and hope that you'll enjoy. and hope that you'll enjoy reading the report.
Carol, let me ask you, do you know what type of tree that is? And my second question is, on that hill in that area, as you may recall, we have turned down another development that was going to go adjacent to the Bishop Two property for various reasons. But my, my second part to my question is, have any of those trees that you're talking about been identified elsewhere on the hill? Do you know?
Well, they're, they're in the wetlands. So we'll also, you know, there's a lot of wetlands there.
Right, but.
And for some reason, they're able to build into the wetlands, which I, they're not really, the law doesn't allow them to do it, but the DEP may allow them to.
You're saying there's, there's three, three types of trees that are on the Bishop Two property that, that have, are special?
Conservation concerns.
Okay. What I'm saying is, outside of that property on that hill in that area adjacent to it, do you know by any chance if those trees have been identified off Bishop Two property in that area?
No, on Bishop Two, they've been identified on it. I'm not understanding your question.
I'm just asking, have they been identified close or outside of the Bishop Two property as well, in addition to?
Oh, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so you want to know how unique are they, you're saying?
Well, if, if they're unique within that area, perhaps they exist elsewhere on the hill that we should be aware of.
Yeah. And I don't, you'd have to invest
Right.
to get someone to do that surveying, but. So the three trees since you asked are the American Holly, the American Elm, and White Green Ash, White and Green Ash. Any other questions?
No, look forward to that.
I look forward to the report.
Yeah.
Pardon?
I said I look forward to reading the report.
Thank you.
And Carol, you'll report, you'll provide that report to DEP too, correct? Okay.
Hello?
Hello, there you go, it's gonna fall. My, I'm awesome, Delaware Riverkeeper here for the Delaware Riverkeeper Network. I feel like I should announce my presence, seeing at the, as the other gentleman announces leaving, so I'm announcing my presence. Anyway, so, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo what Kate Stoffer has said. We really don't know what you're waiting for. We believe that the Delaware Riverkeeper Network, with the expert analyses we provided, with the legal analyses we provided, with the, the zoning ordinances at play here, with the conditions that have been placed on the pre-approval, pre, preliminary site plans, right, blah, 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 you know what I mean? Preliminary approval conditions, and with regards to the constitution, that you do have what you need to say no. And we actually don't think that time helps you. The fact of the matter is, Brian O'Neill is using his time very wisely. He's using his time once again to work the system, right? That's why he came in with this cockamamie phased approach idea, right? So he's going to try to get you to waive the conditions so he can get his development plan on the move so that later, whether or not you're on the board or somebody else gets elected to the board, he's now locked in the approval and it really becomes a non-starter to say no because he's going to claim that he's made so much investment and that you've given him the approval and based on that approval, he's made that investment, this, that, and the other thing, right? And so he's really working the system. He worked the system to get his covenant not to sue. The only reason why he lost his covenant not to sue is because we found out about it and we sued. And that's how he lost it, right? He lost that case, he lost it. The only reason why the remediation is happening is because we sued. The Delaware Riverkeeper Network brought another legal action. And, you know, win, loss, or otherwise, it is very much that legal strategy that has forced the chips, that are forcing action, that has prevented the development of that site and is now resulting in DEP advancing cleanup. And DEP has made a lot of decisions. And amongst the DEP decisions is that they are not going to be able to render any decisions about the status of site cleanup for decades because this is going to be an iterative process. So I don't see how we say time is good for the community. Time allows lots of dynamics to change. Time allows this board to change. Time allows politics to be worked and all kinds of things to be finagled. You know, you have the information to know that development of this site is wrong now and into the future. And you should use your authority on this board right now to just say no. And if you say no, Brian O'Neill is going to sue you and Delaware Riverkeeper Network is going to join you in trying to push back. If you say yes, Delaware Riverkeeper Network is going to sue you and nobody's going to be on the other side standing with you. Because we believe very much that if you say yes, that you will be violating legal protections that are at play here, including the original decision that was rendered by the judge that relied on your conditions as a basis for his decision actually to side with the township and support your original decision. And I think, Scott, I hear you, there's stuff happening behind the scenes, right? We hear things too. We get phone calls too about deals and deal making or the seeking for deal making. And I don't, the community has a right to know what's going on behind the scenes. You know, we've heard talk about that there are some reviews that are in place or that are ongoing or about to be finalized or some sort of reference. Like, what are those? What is the status of those? When will they come out? You know, and, and I think that you should, you should give some more information about what's happening behind the scenes. Because if you're not going to say no, if you believe you're working some sort of magical deal behind the scenes that's going to make the difference here, the community should know that. Because there's a lot of heartache and there's a lot of stress and there's a lot of upset and you know it. And people are coming out, Brian O'Neill's not here, he just penned a little letter and threw it at you. But, you know, community members are coming out every single month, every single meeting and spending their time, energy, and upset to try to convince you to do the right thing and to uphold your promise to protect their health, safety, and welfare. That was one of the things you promised you would do multiple times over and now's your chance to do it. And yes, if you have an answer to the question, that would be great.
Sure, yeah. Sorry, I didn't realize you were looking at me.
I was looking at everybody.
I was watching you on my little TV here. The reviews I was referring to was the previous review letters that the township issued, with the townships consultants issued on the last land development submission. So there's been no resubmission on their part and no review of a resubmission on our part.
Okay.
Only what you're already aware of.
I thought that you were, you were saying that there was something in the works right now that's been completed or about to be completed.
We're awaiting their resubmission so that we can review.
Okay. And is their resubmission part of their, more of their phased approach or?
I'm not sure. All I know is what they mentioned at the last planning commission meeting, which was, I believe in March, or I mean, sorry, February, don't hold me to that, where they said that they may revisit that, but we haven't seen or heard anything since then regarding a phased approach.
I mean, it's just, you, you, you know, you've gotten so many approaches, it really is time to just say no. Can you give any more detail, Scott?
The only, the other detail I'd like to say is, is that while you have put forth a lot of effort and brought a lot of information to us, don't forget, we're still, as a board, voting things and putting conditions on regarding the remediation and trying to protect everything as well underneath the codes and the ordinances that we have in front of us. Okay? So we're not, we're trying to do it under the guides of what we have available at this point in time and what our solicitors providing to us in terms of things that we can do and what we can't do.
But.
So work.
Or recommendations for or against taking certain action?
Right, but that seems like there's like some grand strategy.
Our solicitor's not ordering us to do anything. It's our decision.
Yes, our decision.
No, to be clear, yeah.
But it's based on some sort of strategy or surmise that with all due respect, that you have that time is good and that, you know, maybe Brian O'Neill will eventually go. I mean, this does, this, this does not seem to be appropriate legal guidance. I mean, legal guidance should be, you have the right and the obligation or the obligation to say no. We shouldn't be gaming this out and hoping that the developer is just going to go away because he's not going to go away. He's going to keep working the system. You know that, I know that. He's been doing that for decades on this site and he's been doing it behind the scenes when nobody knew about it. And that's what he's doing right now. And don't think he's not doing that right now. He absolutely is doing it. He's got friends in high places. That's how he got his covenant not to sue. He had friends on the inside and I know that for a fact, that worked to help make that happen for him. And don't think just because some of them have left the DEP that all of them have left the DEP. Just say no. I'm not leaving yet, but I'll be happy to announce my departure.
We actually have a question online.
Carol Armstrong, you know, I just had, oh, I'm sorry.
Carol, can you all?
Yeah, because I've been waiting for a while. Deb, go ahead, please.
Okay. Deboil. Wonder why you know I'm still here. I just wanted to reiterate what Kate said about the, the distress and the anguish that our community is going through and has been going through from some time. And that it is time, not that I was ever a fan of Nancy Reagan's, not to get political, but just say no. With all due respect to your learned counsel. He's been gaming the system that I know of for almost twenty-five years. That's a quarter of a century. This whole process with changing the zoning went on long before. And I think one of the things that our township needs to look at is the idea that allowing for development plan schemes, whatever, should not have an indefinite timeline. The fact that he should be able to sell the land with the plan is ludicrous. And who's going to want to buy it and get into this mess? But that's one of his game plans. The longer he does this, the more money he has technically spent on lawyers, on architects, on engineers, on testing, whatever he says he's doing, the more money he wants for that property. We're a little tiny, lower middle-class neighborhood. We can't afford to buy it. You know, we're not that wealthy of a township. I don't think the township can fully afford to buy it. Because he went from paying almost nothing to jacking up the price to, you know, millions of dollars. And he's done nothing to it. So time isn't always our friend, our learned counsel. It, it, it's damaging us in a lot of ways. And when this whole thing started, I think you were probably in diapers. Okay? So, you know, it's not gotten any better. It's only gotten worse.
Deb, stop complimenting me, would you?
You do, for that matter. I am the eldest spokesman in this room right now. But, you know, it, you know, it doesn't always get better. And so I continue to encourage to say no. I'm not going anywhere. And, and we're just, we're going to keep pushing it. We're going to keep pushing it. And, and I, I hope you will continue to question your strategy and make sure that in your hearts you're doing, you feel you're doing the best thing. Because right now, we don't agree with you. But thank you for listening.
Sure, go ahead, Carol.
In truth, everything that we know from EPA, from native government, from learned scientists, and from statutes of Clean Water Act, Clean Air, says you cannot build on that spot. Maybe decades from now you can. But if you touch
And touch.
if you touch a hair on that site, you're going to be releasing PFAS all over the place. It's already being released and you don't want to make it worse. That's all. That's all I have to say because you're.
Oh, I'm going to make it worse.
Huh? What did I miss there? Or is it an echo? Your zoning regulations don't apply here. That's, that's the thing. It's not your, you don't need to hang on to that as your rationale one way or another because it doesn't apply. That's it. Thanks, everybody.
Because I had another question to think about your question. I just wanted to put a couple of thoughts out there that those species are only in the wetlands area. They're not in the upland area. Because there are a number of springs there that converge into Little Valley Creek. So it's all a wetland. It's not just a full wetland area. And, and they are in that area. So if you're wondering, are they, how unique are they? Are they outside the area? Well, the rest of the area either has been developed or it's upland. So they're probably not. And in terms of, I can't help but get caught up in the conversation that, you know, since you gave the conditional approval, some things have changed. You know more about their, more, more information on the toxins, PFAS, since you had the conditional approval. And you have new information on what's living on that site. You have new information about how much it's impacting. I mean, there's, you have new information that could affect the decision. He has, I have to say, kept you on the defensive. And I know from living life and trying to be effective myself, that any kind of conflict I come into, I try not to get onto the defensive side. That's no position to be in. Can't do anything instructive. So, yeah, he's, he's definitely been playing by his rules and you do have the power as a municipality. You do have the power to do what's right for you, meaning the township. So, you know, Euclid does it. Euclid doesn't allow development where there's that have not been. So you do perhaps have not asserted what's right for your town yet.
Don't forget, this started, whatever, twenty-five years ago too. So, so, yeah. Right. Done anymore?
No.
Okay. So I guess we didn't make a vote on, on this?
No, I didn't make, make a motion yet either. Yeah, before I make a motion, in order to take action to deny this or any plan, you have to be prepared with specific basis when you take that action. That is not tonight. That is not tonight. Could it happen in the future? Sure. But that is not tonight. That would be even a bigger mistake to take an unprepared action. Based on that, I would make a motion to accept the extension of the Bishop Two redevelopment until September thirty, twenty twenty-four, the time within which we have to take action on it.
I'll second that.
And make all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So passes three, nothing for an extension. Moving on to C. Zach?
Sure. This is a request for final release of financial security for seventy-three ton road. That's lot three in the three-ton road business park. Really, just the remaining funds here were for some remaining landscaping that need to be planted. So with that, Dave Kavanaugh, our landscape architect, has been out on site and inspected. Everything's in good order. So we're recommending the final release of those remaining funds.
Is this still going to be, was it Polestar?
Rivian, I believe is the, at least the primary tenant in that building, yes.
Is it still going to be that?
Yeah, as far as I know. I, I guess I shouldn't say that too definitively, but yes, I do believe so.
See that lease sign in front of the building?
Well, that's, that's by a pretty good indicator, yeah.
That they are or they aren't?
But, or you're saying there's a for lease sign or there's a Rivian sign?
I think there is a for lease sign in front of the.
I see. I'll follow up because I'd be interested in that as well.
Just out of curiosity.
I see. I'll follow up, because I'd be interested in that as well. Yeah. I'll follow up and see what I can find out.
Okay. I don't have any problem with the return of the money, but would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, sure. Like the motion to release the financial security of $10,800 to, to more of 73-ton road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And passes.
Next item, 6D. This is a request for a waiver from the Stormwater Management Ordinance for property at 148 Plainbrook Road. This is a stormwater and erosion control permit project to construct a one-story addition to an existing dwelling. They are proposing an infiltration basin to manage the flows from that new impervious. There was a comment, and there's a section of our code that requires that in areas of carbonate geology, or karst topography, or sinkhole-prone areas, that a geologic report be provided. We've been trading some reviews and conversations with the property owner's engineer. They've provided some soil testing and infiltration borings that, though not prepared by a geologist, do depict what we would feel is from a reasonable level of comfort, not the presence of those features that we would be concerned with, at least within the depths that we're talking about. So in consultation with Arrow, we're supportive of their request based on the findings within the documentations that they've provided, if that makes sense.
The one, the one concern that I have is, and I understand that they're looking for that waiver. And based on what we just heard, the beginning of this meeting with, with issues with sinkholes and all of that, I think it's kind of short-sighted that they're not having a full wanting, a full testing done. But so be it. If they want a variance, I would just like to be in a position where we can document to cover ourselves against them coming back in the event that something goes wrong. I know, again, Arrow is saying, fine, and everything looks fine now, but who knows what's going to happen in 25 years, or whenever. So is there anything that we can put in to protect the township if we grant this waiver?
Sure. So one idea might be to include some additional language in their Stormwater Management O&amp;M, the operation and maintenance agreement that's required through the ordinance. Haven't talked to their engineer about that, but I think referencing sort of the process here, what they've, what they've provided, what they've, what we've reviewed, I think there's probably some opportunities to add some sort of just additional safeguards in there in that regard. We will also be out on site observing during construction. So as they, they dig up, we would have the opportunity to at least see if there's anything, you know, of concern there. So I think between myself, Ed, and Bernadette, we should probably add some additional language in that agreement, at a, at a minimum.
Yeah, I think we should do that. So as such, should we not vote on this, or, and wait for the specific wording?
No, I think we could do it, oh, I'm sorry. I think we could do it. I think we. I think we could do it subject to the language in the Stormwater Management Agreement that's acceptable to myself, Zach, and perhaps John Neill. And Township Engineer, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to grant the waiver from Section 17301R, 1742D, to not provide geologic site characterization, subject to agreeing to a Stormwater Management O&amp;M agreement satisfactory to the Township Solicitor, Township Engineer, Township Public Works, Township Planner.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Moving on to zoning and code. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next meeting of the zoning hearing board is June 24 at 7:15 PM. One of the applications for that evening, as you heard earlier, the application of Penn Cash Properties, the 370 Lancaster, has postponed their hearing and will be at that time after they go through other applications here at the township. The only stand, the only hearing we have at the month is the application of Stephen and Jennifer Danch at 2 Aston Road. They have a non-conforming property at that location. They want to add a porch, covered porch, and some patio services in the back, replacing the existing one there that's going to encroach onto their rear yard setbacks. The property is a non-conforming property already. To the north of the property is, to the next house is 120 feet away through a wooded area. To the west of the property are two open space lots owned by East White Land Township, and it's a corner property, so it has two frontages. The property was set back at the original development, back in the early 70s. It was set on the back corner of the property, which makes improvements to some of the, some of the properties in that area a little difficult. And that's the reason why they're here before the zoning hearing board, to get approval, to do these, these minor improvements to their property. And it'll encroach a couple, seven feet into the rear yard setback with this addition of what I determined was their rear yard setback. And they have support of the neighbors. They don't have a representative here this evening. They had an emergency in the family, and their contractor couldn't make it. So I told them I'd give the presentation. If the board is interested to ask questions, I do have plans. Zach has plans for me. If there's any questions that come up, if you want to see the property.
Your overall feeling on this, that it's not really a major issue, correct?
Yes. It's not, it's not impacting any of the surrounding properties. Neighbors are going to be in support of the property. It's a reasonable encroachment into, you know, it's a difficult property for them to improve because of where it was located.
So I, I don't, I don't see a need to send a solicitor. Do you, Peter, Rich?
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under updates for the month, we continue going and knocking on doors. We see grass and trash complaints. We've got a lot of cooperation and some quick responses in coordination with our Keystone, our building inspectors. We've been exchanging a lot of information on some properties that have gone on with, we're doing some work without permits and vice versa, the concerns that they had. So we've been in good communication and helping each other out. Recently, we've had a couple complaints and inquiries about allowable burning in the township. Just a reminder to residents that under Chapter 90, it's titled the fire prevention under Township Code, there's a general prohibition on outdoor burning and open burning in the township, except where permitted by definition in the code. There are no permitted fires of any type on publicly owned properties, and would only be permitted where the township has installed and maintained appliances for these purposes, such as fireplaces, grills, things of that nature. Where they're permitted, patio wood burning units are permitted in all zoning districts, except that this practice must be done on a private property. These units cannot be used to burn trash, can only be used clean, clean wood to burn, and must maintain 25-foot setbacks to all structures on the property or adjoining properties, and all fires must be located at least 25 feet from any property line. You can act, if public has any questions, they can give me a call here at the office, or you can access these regulations by using the search bar on our township website for these particular rules. Just reference Chapter 90, Fire Prevention. It will take your right to Township Code E360 on our website. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, John. Any comments? Okay. Moving on to Section 8, public comments, for anything that we've not discussed yet on the agenda. Are there any concerns?
Hi, I'm from Delaware Riverkeeper. Confirming the township that was speaking about being, sorry, speaking about being on defense versus offense. We've brought it to your attention previously. We haven't talked about it in depth. It's come up tonight, and, and I was just reminded of it, that, you know, the municipality of Euclid actually has in their ordinances a prohibition on construction on contaminated sites. You have to demonstrate that sites are free of toxins or hazards, or have been fully remediated, something to that effect. That's what I was just trying to look up when we were talking. And I would just really like to, and there was a legal challenge recently, and I was just confirming from my recollection that the municipality was successful, at least in the challenge, to the, in that particular challenge against the ordinance. So I'd just really like to encourage you, right, not to put yourself knowingly back in this position with regards to another Bishop Tube, and consider passing an ordinance that pretty much mirrors what nearby Euclid has, using the same kind of language. And do that as quickly as possible, because, as Carol said, it's better to be on offense than defense, and this gives you a really powerful tool. And I'd like to encourage you to pass it. And also, I'd like to encourage you to prepare the documentation that Rich talked about, so that in September, when it comes to Bishop Tube, you can just say no. Question?
Thank you.
I thought you were eager for more.
Oh, no, just assuming the facts haven't changed, sure. Assuming we're in a position where we have to make a decision. Like, for example, tonight, if we did not get that extension letter, what I would have recommended, that we still not take an action tonight, but we hold a special meeting a week from now. And we would be prepared with the resolution, with whatever action is taken in a proper way. We would have had to, and we would have.
And I think the point, the point is to not wait for more permissions, for more extensions. Plan, put together your documentation, so that at latest, when you come to that September meeting, you can take that vote, you'll have the documentation, and you can just say no. But I think that I'm not allowed to be speaking about this, because it was already on the agenda. I presume you can find the, the Euclid ordinance on your own? If you can't, I'll be happy to send it to you.
I did look that up, that case. Right, they prevailed the township, and then the case was settled. But I think that's a valid observation.
Right. Appreciate it.
And then I, I think we, we really have to be in a situation where we have to see what DEP comes back with the remediation. Otherwise, it's going to go to court anyway.
It's going to go to court anyway.
Well.
I mean, it's going to go to court. And, you know, the DEP is.
It'll, it'll go into court and we'll lose. I'll tell you right off the bat, I'll tell you that.
100%. I think you're wrong.
Well, okay, but.
I think you're wrong.
Anyway, but I'm just saying, that's another, that's another piece of the puzzle that we need to see.
Yeah. I mean, with, with what you've, with what you have in your ordinances, with what you've put in place with regards to your conditions, with what he's actually requesting now in terms of a phased construction approach, I mean, you put all of this together, you are in a, in a strong position. And, and I think it is very unwise to be using this strategy of, we're going to hope to delay, 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 in, in the hopes that he walks away, which is what we heard tonight, which was disappointing. May not have been the intent, but that was what, that's certainly what I heard.
That's, I would disagree.
Okay. That's okay.
I mean, if, we, we could, we could make a motion right here. Power. But that's not what we're doing, so. Anyway. All right, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. I'll just read it. Do you have another comment?
Not about Bishop Tube. It is about my neighborhood, though. And it just kind of hit me, who Arrow is and everything like that. And I know I've come to you before and said, whoever did that traffic study from Old Lincoln to Old Lancaster, going south on Old Lincoln, turning right onto Old Lancaster without putting a right turn lane there, yeah, if you come into our neighborhood at Cube Smart.
There was an Arrow.
Okay. Whoever did that, I still think you should get your money back. But with everything that is said tonight about grants, and I don't know how, how all this work, or money available for a 3-ton road, is there anything that we can do to put in the plan in the future to put a right turn lane there? Because there are times when, if you're turning right at Cube Smart, off of Lancaster, onto Old Lincoln, you're all the way back underneath the trestle. And it's not safe. So that, I don't know how we go about.
State Road.
Making something happen there?
Yeah, State Road, the work would have to be done on Route 30.
No, the, all you need is a right hand, who owns Old Lincoln?
But the right turn onto Lincoln?
No, it's more that.
From, from Lincoln?
From Lincoln, going south.
Right.
But you're going uphill, so it's a little confusing. But you're making a right, going west on Old Lancaster? There's no right-hand turn into our village.
Into the village, up there.
And so all, that's where the work has to happen, because now all of a sudden, people are backed up all the way on Route 30. Outside the turn lane, even. You know, they're in the.
There's a left turn lane there. There's a dedicated.
There's a left turn lane into a little apartment.
A little nothing development.
People who live there think it's really fantastic.
Very nice development. I looked at a house there.
But yes, so you have a left-hand turn there, but, and people don't go all the way up to Old Lincoln to get to Malvern, they'll go down to Warren. So it's, it's an issue. So if there's somehow we could get a right turn, when Cube Smart built that and we said yes to them, we should have said, yeah, but you have to put a right turn. And we were here for Cube Smart, too, believe me, because we wanted a park, and Lou laughed at me.
Thank you. Yeah, we could, Zach, we could maybe make a note to, you know, Bowman do a traffic study. I, I know you were thinking that. Right?
Our funds are eligible, but I don't think it's included as a, an improvement. Of course, I'm on now, now that I'm done talking. Thank you. You're welcome. I was looking in our Act 209 Capital Improvements Plan, which is the list of traffic improvements that we can use our traffic impact fee money for. I don't see it as a, as a necessary improvement to accommodate current or future traffic. I'd have to look back at this study, but we can, we can certainly look at, into that and put it on our traffic committee agenda for July.
You just said something that doesn't make sense to me, or maybe I misunderstood it, that you don't see it a problem now that it needs to be attended to.
Oh, no, yeah. Well, I couldn't speak to the problem personally, but we.
Well, come to my house, come visit. You'll see.
The way the traffic impact fees that you hear about through developments, the way that's set up is that there's a, there's a study of the township to determine what the build-out would be. There's a study to determine what improvements are needed to accommodate current traffic and future growth. And there's a list of capital improvements, roadway improvements, signals, turn lanes, things like that, that those funds that are collected from the impact fee can be used for. I was just looking to see, usually this is a pretty good indicator of what our highest priority, most needed improvements are, and then we can determine whether we can use those funds for them. I don't see it on here. This is kind of like my first study, but we'll put it on our traffic committee agenda discussion.
Because now you have Eastside Flats in Malvern, you got, you know, all the stuff that's going down, being built down here. It's, yeah, it's an issue. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to final item nine, under the consent agenda, which I'll read in its entirety. Any questions? Please stop and ask me any questions. A, approve the meeting minutes from May 8, 2024. Ratify the payment of the bills for, through May 31, 2024, in the amount of $864,876. Accept the treasurer's report as of April 2024. Approve assessment settlement for Chester County Tax Parcel 42-02-00. Approve assessment settlement for Chester County Tax Parcel 42-02-0010 in the amount of $3,987.
I'm, I'm gonna make, that's $3,987,000. We're missing the three zeros.
Three, three zeros. Wow.
That is a big difference.
All right. Now you got me really, what's the scoop on this one?
It's 14 Lee Boulevard.
14 Lee Boulevard, okay.
It was assessed, we came to a, we came to a settlement, the school district, the county, the East Whiteland Township, and the property owner to, for the, it came down a little bit, so it's $3,987,000.
Then I like that number. Final is consent to the sale of parcel, parcel 42-6-2 in the amount of $1,000. And any questions?
What was the sale on, Bernadette? For $1,000?
This is the Chester County Tax Claim Bureau. This did not get sold at their two standard sales, which are the, they have a yearly sale, and then they have a judicial sale. They didn't get sold at either of those. This is called the repository sale. It's basically, hey, we have these properties that have not sold at the normal, during the normal process, if somebody wants to make a bid on them, they let the township and the other taxing authorities know, in case we have a huge problem, because we're not gonna get paid in full the taxes. We're, we are owed like $71, I think, total. So they just let, and you have the right under the law to object to it if it's too low or some, if you think it's too low. But we aren't owed that much. We're owed like, I think, $71 to $73. So this just gets it back on the tax rolls.
Very good. Thank you.
Peter, just so you know, it, it's, it's a, it's a grandiose piece of property right next to the Pico substation. It has great, it has great views, and, and no one will ever build next to you. So, there you go. I think Peter might be interested.
I'm ready.
Anyway, would you like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
I would like to make a motion to approve the June 12th, 2024 consent agenda as read.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have closed at 8:25.